... public hearing. My name is Jack Wall and I'm the chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Before we get started, I want to introduce our newest member, Mr. Barry Frankenfield. He is representing the Lynn Haven District and he replaces Whitney Graham. He has quite a bit of experience in the planning realm and we're glad to have him here on-
See, the other half is laughing, so there's an issue here.
Okay, well, that's okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Costin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Klein.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this glorious day. God, we thank you for how wonderful you have been to us and we praise your name. Now, Lord, we ask that you would look on this meeting today, God, that there would be peace and harmony, deliberation, God, that brings forth the expected outcome, God. Guide us and direct us, God, as we make these decisions on today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I've asked Mr. Redmond to introduce the planning commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to start on my right side of the dais over there with that lady is Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney and part of her charge is, she does a bunch of different things in that role, but one of them is planning and zoning matters and so she, you know, she keeps us on the straight and narrow. Next to her is Holly Quayar. She serves at large. She is a consultant, which means she does a bunch of things, too. John Costin over there, who did a wonderful job, per usual, with our prayer. He is a retired fire captain, Virginia Beach Fire Captain, and he also serves at large. I was distressed to learn that Robin Klein, who is a social worker and represents the Centerville District, is not going to be with us for more than a few months. She has a family move and the offering and so I think in the summertime, she's going to be, she's going to be leaving us and so sad about that today. So there. My name's Dave Redmond. I am a commercial real estate broker. I represent the Bayside District. This fellow to my left is Don Horsley. He also serves at large and he is a farmer. In the center there, center seat, is Jack Wall. Jack's an engineer. He represents the Rose Hall District and this year he is serving as our chairman. That's why he's sitting in the center. To his left is George Alcaraz. George is a contractor. He's a business owner. He's an events promoter. He represents the Beach District and he is serving this year as our vice chairman. Dee Oliver, to his left, is a former vice chairman, a former chairman. She's a funeral director and a restaurant owner and has a number of other kinds of things that she does as well and she also serves at large. Mr. Weiner, David Weiner, the guy with the laptop there, he represents the Kempsville District. He is a commercial salesman in the building industry. David Bradley, who is sitting, he just waved, David Bradley, sitting next to Mr. Weiner. He's a retired budget officer, in the budget director in the city of Virginia Beach and he represents the Princess Anne District. And then finally, we're getting on Barry today because it's his first day. Barry Frankenfield is a retired director of a whole bunch of things, but at one point he was a planning director and not too long ago, he is now filling the Lynn Haven District seat that was recently vacated by our colleague Whitney Graham. So, Barry, welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you and I'm sure you're going to help us an awful lot. And sitting to Barry's left is Bobby Tahan. Bobby is the planning director. He has a number of fine folks working for him and helping us and so Bobby, if you would introduce those folks, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerking today, we have Madison Harris and Pam Sandloop. Starting with the planning staff that's sitting out in the audience, we have Hannah Sabar, zoning administrator, Wadell and Marshall Coleman with our current planning team. Online, we have Carolyn Smith from long distance away, but she is paying attention. So if anybody wants to toss anything Carolyn's way, you're free to do that as well. We have Brandon Hackney, who's one of our planners in zoning, Levi Luckenbach, who's also a zoning inspector with us that's assisting with short-term rentals now, Michaela McKinney, Hank Morrison, Carrie Bookholz, Elizabeth Nowak, and Rick Loman, who's our transportation engineer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tahan. And I will also note that we have David Couch with the Department of Economic Development, who is with us in the room today as well, so he'll keep a good eye on us, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Redmond. Next, I've asked the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next and then speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. For WebEx speakers, once your name is called, please pause for two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commissioners hear your complete remarks. As only one audio feed can be opened at a time, do not ask, "Can you hear me?" as you will not be able to hear a response. If a speaker does not respond or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is the consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn. Seeing none, please come forward if you have any items to be deferred. All right, thank you. The next order of business is the consent agenda and I'm going to turn that over to the vice chair to run that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have four items on the consent agenda. These applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission have concurred and, I'm sorry, and there are no speakers signed in opposition at this time. Is that correct? Item number one, an ordinance to amend Section 111 of the city zoning ordinance to add terms related to energy storage facilities, an ordinance to add Sections 22, 5.02 to the city zoning ordinance to add requirements to energy storage facilities, an ordinance to amend Sections 1001 of the city zoning ordinance to include energy storage facility as a use permit with a conditional use permit in the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts. And I'm asking the zoning administrator, please come forward and present this agenda.
Thank you. Yes, this amendment was sponsored by Vice Mayor Wilson. It does include three portions. The first portion is an amendment to Section 111 of the city zoning ordinance to add the definitions of energy storage facility and decommissioning. The second portion is adding Section 225.02 to the zoning ordinance that would add the requirements to the energy storage facilities as a new use, including 100-foot setback and landscaping requirements and decommissioning. And then the last portion is an ordinance to amend Section 1001 of the zoning ordinance to include energy storage facilities as a use permitted in the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts, both with a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'm going to go to consent agenda number, item number two. Baker Road Properties LLC for I-1 Light Industrial District, conditional A-36 Apartment District. Is there a representative here to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. For the record, my name is Rob Beeman, local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm. Here today on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to read the conditions. They're acceptable and we appreciate being on consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Dave Redmond to read this for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Chairman, this is an application of Baker Road Properties LLC for conditional rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial to conditional A-36 Apartment District on Baker Road in the Bayside District. The applicant is requesting to rezone a almost 15-acre parcel from I-1, as I mentioned, to conditional A-36 apartment to redevelop the property with a 524-unit multifamily residential community. That would result in a density of about 35 and 1/2 acres per acre, units per acre. This property is located, and there you can see the graphics showing the layout of the buildings, this property is located within the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area and is currently developed with a vacant and unfinished sports complex. You've probably seen, thank you, you've probably seen that complex for many years. It was not successful. It consists of a football field, some support buildings, some paved areas, but it's not in great shape. The submitted site plan depicts two buildings, each four stories in height and each will have an extensive amenities package, as you can see. There are two stormwater ponds. There's a great deal of new landscaping. The development requires 930 spaces, 930 spaces by code, parking spaces. It actually has 20 parking spaces beyond that, so it certainly is adequately parked. More importantly, the project helps to diversify the existing product within Burton Station. It replaces an aging and failing unfinished potential business with a highly desirable use, namely housing, which is in short supply and does so, thank you again, laptop guru with a modern design that will fit well into the Burton Station area. In short, it's a positive improvement on the property, serves a particularly needed use. There was no opposition today and the commission therefore places it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. The next item on consent is item number four for Georgie Stoyanov for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 115. Planning staff will handle that.
Mr. Vice Chair, the applicant is virtual today, calling Georgie Stoyanov. If you would please pause two to three seconds, please state your name and if the conditions related to your application are acceptable.
Georgie Stoyanov? Can you hear me?
Mr. Stoyanov, are the conditions related to your applications acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Our hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Dee Oliver to read this for the record.
Thank you. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental located in District 6, which is formerly the Beach District. The address is 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 115. Previously, they already have, I believe, nine short-term rentals in this condominium unit and it is located in the OR section of Virginia Beach, which is the Oceanfront Resort. They are approved for all the requirements for a short-term rental and therefore we've put it on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. And next item is number five for Jesse Ryan, an applicant for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 909 Pacific Avenue, Unit C. Is there a representative here today? Please come forward.
Yes.
So if you can just state your name for the record.
Jesse Ryan.
Okay. Do you accept all the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Maybe you see it.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Mr. Costin to please read this for the record.
The applicant is requesting to operate a two-bedroom, 617-square-foot, short-term rental unit within the Retreat by the Sea condominium development. Short-term rentals are prevalent on this property with currently eight approved conditional use permits for the operation of short-term rentals. Two parking spaces are required for this request and the applicant has designated one parking space on-site and will provide a second one, which will be leased at the Ninth Street Parking Garage. The item meets all conditions and is in the proper area and we have therefore placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda and the commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items one, two, four, and five.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve by consent items one, two, four, and five? Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wall. Can you make that motion?
George, make it. Yeah, I was going to make it.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I thought you'd already made it.
Yep.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve agendas one, two, four, and five on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I am going to vote in favor of those items on the consent agenda. However, I should note that I have a letter on file with the city attorney's office, so I will specifically be abstaining on agenda items number four and five, the two short-term rental applications. I have a client in the travel industry and I abstain from not just individual applications, but any sorts of ordinances that relate to that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a second. Do we have any other abstentions? The motion for approval is made by Mr. Alcaraz and seconded by Mr. Horsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The vote is open.
Let's see if I do this. I've never done this before. I've never done it before, so.
By recorded vote of 11 in favor and zero against, agenda items one and two have been recommended for approval. By recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, with an abstention by Mr. Redmond on agenda items four and five, have been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applications on the consent agenda, thank you for your participation. You can remain for the rest of the meeting, either virtually or in person, but you are free to leave. All right, so the next, the next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, we are ready for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number three, North Independence Storage LLC, an application for a conditional use permit mini warehouse on property located at 1612 Independence Boulevard, located in District 9, formerly Bayside.
Thank you, Pam. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's RJ Nutter. I represent the applicant, in this case, North Independence Storage LLC. Appreciate your time this afternoon and your willingness to look at this application. I want to begin by thanking staff. Michelle did a terrific job of keeping us informed along the way. I would tell you, we've been working closely with residents of that area and I always like to work closely with the district representatives, as you know, both here and on council, whenever we have an application. So, having said all that, let me tailor it about the property. This property is zoned unconditional B2. It is sandwiched between a used car facility that is also zoned unconditional B2 and a small shopping center, which is also zoned unconditional B2. All of these properties were developed years ago. None of them have stormwater facilities. As you can see, many of them are almost all completely impervious. In fact, it's the Wells Fargo site in the center that has any degree of some non-impervious areas or pervious areas whatsoever. And I bring that up because one of the concerns we heard by residents and in some of the emails you may have received have to do with the stormwater system here. And so I want you to know that all three of these properties have no stormwater programs whatsoever and they're adjacent to the townhouses, which apparently have experienced some flooding in the past. The nice side about, one of the nice parts about this application, as you can see here, is that we'll be putting in the first stormwater system of any of these three properties. And as you know, with the stormwater program, much of which you're going to hear later today, the city of Virginia Beach has the toughest stormwater program in all of Virginia. None of that was applicable when these properties were developed previously. But I point that out to you because, quite frankly, we'll be channeling all the water toward Independence Boulevard. In addition to that, one of the owners we spoke to yesterday indicated that there is a, the property slants, well, this, anyway, the property slants in the back toward their townhouses. So we went out there and looked at it and she's absolutely right. So what we'll have to do is grade that area away so that it no longer dips down toward their properties. So we'll have to devise a system in there, but I told her yesterday we would do that. I told her I'd put it on the record that we would do that. So the net effect of this is we'll be, if there is water coming off this site today from this property into their townhouses, we'll be capturing it and putting away, forwarding into underground systems adjacent to Independence Boulevard, in the parking area. None of that exists today. So, but I want to point that out to you because it was a major concern that they heard. But as I indicated, these properties are all unconditional B2 and this is a use, as you know, in hearing these applications before, that has amongst the least traffic impact of any use and it also has, is a great reputation for being amongst the quietest, least problematic use that you can have. That's important because this property can be developed in any manner by right and so I would submit to you that when this is all done, it will be far less impactful on the adjacent townhomes than the other adjacent uses, namely a used car lot and a shopping center. So it would have a far less impact than any other use that you could have. I'd also point out that uses like this are self-storage facilities and this one, as you know, is fully self-contained, fully conditioned, three stories. It only has three employees, so it's basically an unoccupied building. So no one's looking down behind them, no one's looking down. In fact, one of the staff things we looked at was putting in some fake windows in the back, but we didn't want the residents behind it to think that maybe there's somebody in the building looking down. So we did architectural features to the building to make it articulate well instead of fake windows for that very purpose. So, anyway, that's one of the things we looked at here. But the other thing about this type of use, these type of uses are proliferating all over the city in major commercial areas. They're on almost every major road in the city. Virginia Beach Boulevard, Holland Road, Shore Drive, Worthen Boulevard, Indian River Road, Bird Neck Road, Alaskan Road, Lynn Haven Parkway. If you've got a commercial quarter, you're likely to see a self-storage facility there. And as you know, the new ones look like office buildings. They don't look like one-story buildings with a whole bunch of garage doors. So this is a use that's predominant in areas like this. It's a use that will have less impact than the uses adjacent to it and it's a use that will frankly improve the conditions of the residents behind it. Now, a couple of things I'd like to point out as well about this is that among the problems that we faced, can I go back to the photograph that shows the townhouses in the front? If I could, it's one of the previous ones. There we go. This one on the left. As you can see, these homes are completely exposed to, quite frankly, Independence Boulevard. And Independence has, as we know from Rick Loman, amongst the highest traffic counts in the city. It also has a lot of emergency vehicles because the police department is just down the street. Bayside Hospital is just down the street and so there's a lot of emergency vehicles coming out here. This building will completely block the sound and light's visibility from Independence Boulevard from those homes. This is the exact same condition, actually, Ms. Oliver mentioned it this morning, on the one on Oriole Drive. And when we approved that application years ago with this commission, we found that it actually blocked the sound and the noise of the condominiums directly behind it. So this would have the exact same effect here on these properties. So what we focused on in this process was how we minimize impact on the adjacent property. So we had a building design that looks like an office, number one. We did extra landscaping and, which was a big concern, frankly, of the district representative. Mr. Redmond there, sitting there, was very concerned about this. We put in additional landscaping here in the front and we put additional landscaping in the back. But we really emphasized a lot in the front to soften the look of the building. So that's been done. We eliminated vehicular access around the sides and the rear of the building. As you know, today, there's a drive-through back there with two, three drive-lanes and someone could go in there, reconvert that building, any number of things, and have traffic behind those homes, behind the building, and all of that's eliminated by virtue of this application. Now what that did, however, if we do that, as we did, it puts a lot of emphasis on the vehicular internal access in the front, so we don't have the ability to go around the building. So, but at any rate, I did want to let you know that that's part of the reason why we were seeking two access points. Now, I will tell you, I sat in the earlier session and talked to my client in the interim and we are willing to eliminate one, which is condition five. We're willing to eliminate one of those two access ways. The benefit of that is from traffic, from Rick's perspective and Ms. Oliver, from yours' perspective perhaps, is that, and certainly David's, is that it allows us to put additional landscaping in the front of the building. So we addressed Rick's problem. We addressed David's issue of additional landscaping beyond what the city would otherwise require and so we are happy to make that concession. So, as you can see, we've tried to address concerns of adjacent property owners. One other thing I'll tell you is that there's a, the used car facility next door, my client met with them on several occasions and he was concerned about visibility. So, and this was, I've never seen a client do this, but this is a really nice group here. They actually removed a 20-foot-by-20-foot portion of the building there in the kind of lower right-hand corner of the building. You see it jobs out like that? They did that just to provide additional visibility for the people next door, even though this building now and then complied fully with all the setback requirements, now and then. So you've got an application, therefore, for you that has lower impact than any of the existing uses. It has lower traffic impact. It shields the residents in the back from noise. It puts in the first stormwater system in that entire area along the lines. And if I could address one thing, condition number, condition five, as said, we will comply with. Condition number seven relating to lighting, if I could address that a little bit because there were some concerns raised about that with Ms. Jones that I spoke to yesterday. And I think she was concerned that it's in Section 7B that the light fixtures would not exceed 14 feet. I think she was thinking that was in the back of the building. So I think we'd like to put, so lighting fixtures in the parking lot would not exceed 14 feet. And finally, on the, we told her that, look, the only lighting we plan to put in, Mr. Costin, is the event the fire department requires, lighting over an emergency door. We don't plan to have any lighting back there. We plan to have to be, just leave it alone and we think that's a benefit to everyone. So I would want to let everybody know that for the record as well and we're happy to amend it to say that no lighting in the rear, which should only be lighting approved by the fire department for an emergency access way, sir. But those are the conditions we wanted to touch base with you on and I'm happy to answer questions you have. One other thing I'll tell you, my client is, couldn't be here today. It's spring break for a lot of families and many people are out of town. And unfortunately, but he went to an amazing length to try to outreach people here. And what I've learned is two things. Outreach is a two-way street. He went to every, put in the doors of every single townhouse, there's about nine of them, immediately adjacent to this, invited people to a meeting. immediately adjacent to this, invited people to a meeting, before the signs went up, by the way, which is over two months ago, and, to a meeting, and we rented a restaurant, invited them to come, and no one showed up.
Really?
No one showed up. And this happens every occasion, but we wanted to reach out to them. And so, in fact, you'll see in your package, we only sent a copy of what we sent. We sent the flyer that we put into people's doors and so forth. We also then went with the owner of the shopping center next door. At the time, she was perfectly happy. I can't explain the recanting of her position, but we met with her as well. And then, of course, they've indicated we met with the adjacent property owner to the, well, to the right.
I've got a fire experience. So, would you?
Ma'am.
Oh, excuse me. Hang on. Yeah. Plenty of time.
So at any rate, that's right. We met with him, and that's what resulted in us taking off a corner of the building. So as you can see, this is an applicant who's done a great job of outreach, a great job of trying to address issues that were brought to attention. And we appreciate staff's recommendation, and we would ask for your recommendation as well. And happy to answer any questions, Mr. Wall, as always.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Redmond?
Yes. I want to confirm a couple of things you said. First off, it was probably, what, three months ago, you first approached me with this and said, I want to talk to you about this application that's coming? And I will also confirm that both you and the applicant were very responsive to the concerns that I'd raised, and we've talked about it over many, many, many months. They were the appearance of the building, and that I really hope that it could be really intensely landscaped up front to improve that appearance to Independence Boulevard, precisely because it does have a lot of traffic.
Yes, sir.
And so all of that is absolutely true. It's not all that common that we get that, so I do appreciate you doing that.
Yes, sir. Happy to do that. Happy to do so. And any other questions?
Anyone else?
No.
I've got a question.
Oh, Mr. Wall, yes, sir.
Where's the stormwater going to go?
Go, Mr. Wall.
Stormwater management.
It goes, we'll be putting very expensive underground tanks. And what will happen, Mr. Wall, is we'll have to grade that property away so it now drains, it's now almost surface flow. It drops down right by the condos, the townhouses right behind it, but that's only in about a 15-foot area. So we've got to regrade that area so that it drains forward. We'll then capture that in stormwater systems back there, some manholes will be piped into the stormwater system, and the outfall will be into the public right away along Independence Boulevard. So you won't see them, in other words, but it'll be underground.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the city, by the way, has to approve all that, and you go through quite a bit of analysis, as you all know very well, and as the speakers who are going to speak to you later are going to tell you about as well. So you have a very robust stormwater system here. So, one thing I'll tell you, we won't be causing flooding. That's for sure. So, but I appreciate your question, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this item?
Yes, sir. We have three. One is in person and two are webex. So I'll call the in-person speaker first, Connie Jones.
That would be me.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Connie Jones, and I own one of the townhouses that's directly behind, in the middle, behind. I wanted to first say that I only became aware of the mini warehouse seven days ago when I received from the city of Virginia Beach notice that there was going to be a warehouse built there. And, which is this, I immediately called my councilman, Louis Jones, and he told me for, to get more information, to call the city manager's office, and I did. And Karen Guest was able to get me, you know, the information to help. And I'm, I have spoken with each townhouse resident that is directly behind this development. I want to go back for just a second, and I want to say that when I got the notice, I envisioned a mini warehouse. And I want to kind of describe what this mini warehouse is. It is a building that will take up about an acre. That whole thing is going to be a building. And they have proposed that it be 40 feet high, a wall, 40 feet high. And actually, they can only do it 35 feet high because the code says that if you're within 100 feet of a residence, it cannot be higher than 35 feet. So they're going to have to scale it down back a little bit to 35. And so you've got a three-story, 90,000 square feet of warehouse space. That's nine zero 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 zero, 90,000. And it's going to be built, the back wall is going to be 15 feet. I don't know, I need to get my tape measure out, but I think you're about 15 feet from me. That's 35 feet high, and it's going to be, take up an acre. Now, that's a mini warehouse. I don't know what a regular warehouse is going to be.
Yep. Well, you're, unfortunately, your time is, you know, you only get three minutes.
Okay. So I want to get right to it.
Okay. Just get right to it.
I talked to Mr. Nutter yesterday and Mr. Mentor, and I said about the flooding, right now, as he, that's why he brought it up, I told him, this is what I'm going to speak about today, is that right now, it's been there for 40 years, and the original plan was for, the rear of our property was to drain back into a swell and go to the.
All right, Ms. Jones, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have to wrap it up here.
And we, we have to, we have to make it a requirement that he doesn't dump the water, the stormwater goes to us.
Okay. How about, okay, so that, your time is up, but how about I ask you a question?
All right.
And, okay, so what are, what are your thoughts on the stormwater?
I, I'm sorry?
Can you, can you please, yeah, can you please describe the existing conditions of the stormwater out there behind your townhouse?
The rainfall, when it rains, it hits the asphalt in back of us, and it drains, because of the slope, it drains right into us. And with a B2, and he, this isn't his first rodeo, he's built two in Virginia Beach, two in Norfolk, two in Portsmouth, two, he's built them, he's been building them.
So the stormwater.
And he builds it all the way to the lot line, and then it drops everything, and he builds his land up, and then it drops directly off. And when it drops off, all that water comes to us.
And one thing about that is that it was, there is Development Services Center, and they work very hard to prevent, you know, that kind of problem, that the adjacent property doesn't drain onto the, onto the residents that are, you know, directly adjacent to, you know, a development. So, and I think Mr. Nutter kind of addressed that their intent is to take everything from their site to the front. So I think that's, that's probably addressed fairly well.
That he's going to take everything to the front?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Ah, yes. I understand there's an architect that lives next door to my townhouse, and he came to the planning department, looked at it, and said that they cannot, on their 40-foot or 35-foot tall building, they can't just dump it onto us. They're going to have to take it underground and pull it to the front. But it's not only the water coming off his building, it's rainfall. As the rain comes down and the slope is into us right now, and we have a 20-foot buffer between us and a road. Not only is that road going to be gone, our 20-foot buffer will become a 15-foot buffer, and the only plan is to worry about some shrubs, putting shrubs back there and a few trees. Well, it's not the trees and the shrubs. I'm concerned about direct waterslide rainfall, and we have been flooded out. And that the residents, several of them have put rain barrels.
It's Ms. Jones, correct? Is that?
Um, Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Connie Jones.
So you currently have drainage problems. Is that what you're saying? Or do you have?
He is buying a problem that already exists. I, it will be no cost, additional cost to him to take care of the drain problem. And he can do it. And I talked to him yesterday, and I talked to the owner, the buyer, Mr. Mentor, and I said that, you know, this is a problem. It is a problem. We flood, and it needs to be taken care of.
Okay, all right.
And I want it put in the regulations that this is required.
Ms. Jones, I appreciate that. Yeah. So, Mr. Weiner.
So, I mean, I would love, I invite you to stay after this is over and listen to our workshop on stormwater, because what we're going to get involved in after this, you'll understand a little bit more, because what application, what a development has to do these days to get that storm, to get the water moved away from you, it's not only going to move the water away from you, but it's going to help with your drainage too. Okay? You're going to be surprised. So it's not, it's something that our city's been working on for a couple of years now, and it's pretty intense, and these builders have to follow these rules and regulations or they're not going to get passed, they're not going to be able to build. And there's stormwater models that have to be conducted and have to be gone through and make sure that it's going to work. So it's not like we just started working on this. It's been going on for a few years now. So I welcome you to stay afterwards if you'd like to get into it. It's going to be interesting.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Jones? Anybody else? I really appreciate your time. Thank you for coming.
I just want to say that the only people I could get a hold of in the short few days was the residents there. The only people that got notice are the two owner occupants. That's the only two people. The third owner occupant is overseas, and I understand she's trying to be a part of the Zoom, the web, so that she can hear what's going on, but she's stationed overseas and out of the country.
So I do have one more question, sorry. So you're in the middle, you're an owner, are you an owner, you own and occupy, is that what you're?
No, I own, but I have a tenant.
You have a tenant, and the only other, so you mean all the other ones are rentals, is what you're?
No. Three of the eight are owner occupied.
Owner occupied, okay.
And those three people are the only ones that got noticed, they got a flyer on their door. One of those three is stationed overseas, is in the military, and did not receive theirs. So only two people got noticed until the city, by law, by state law, notified us.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. I appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two more speakers, both webex, calling Melanie Tool. If you'll please wait two to three seconds, and then state your name and go directly into your comments.
Hi, I'm Melanie Tool. In short, I think the stormwater drainage is wonderful. It's good that that's going to be a requirement. I, that was one of my main concerns, was our drainage issue. We have gotten a hold of the bank that used to own the property, and we've had many letters submitted. I've called the city about this problem, and we've never really been able to get anywhere. Also, my due diligence was probably not into it at the time. But now that this huge building is going up behind us, it does scare me about the flood and the water coming into my home. I've had to buy new floor and furniture and things twice due to the flooding of that road that's behind us. My only other concern, really, is floodlights, which he addressed, that he's only required to put with the fire department once out back. I don't want it to be 15 foot. I guess no one's addressed this, the property line. We have Verizon that runs behind our house. We actually have boxes that are in the corners of our backyard. We're going to have to be able to have more than just an alleyway. So I kind of want that to be readdressed with me, because I didn't really hear too much about where it is exactly going to go from our property line. 35 foot, from what I understand, the whole thing has to be 35 foot or less, and it sounds like he's trying to do 40 foot in the front. So that needs to be addressed. Light, of course, none of us are going to get sunlight from this huge building. Yes, it'll be pretty in the front, but it's not going to be pretty on the side when we can't see anything but a three-story building, literally, throw a rock at it. Let me think. I also kind of just want to say that I've been here for 25 years. I have owned it and lived here for 25 years. And I just want to say that flyer that they stated that they put on our door, that's awesome. But, you know, we get a lot of things on our door, pizza places and things of that nature, that we don't look at. If he really, really wanted to get a hold of us, he should have went door to door and just knocked on it and let us answer it, and let him tell us face to face what he was planning. And I would have loved to have gone to dinner. I would have gone to dinner. And for no one to show up kind of tells me that, yes, he tried to do something, that shows he did something, but he really didn't want our input because he wants his building up. So.
Thank you. Your time was up, and I'm sorry that that was cut off that way, but that's just the way it is.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, one more speaker. Oh, I guess we haven't one more in person. All right, we'll proceed with our next webex speaker, Ida Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz, if you would please wait two to three seconds, and then state your name and proceed directly into your comments. You will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ida Ortiz, and I am the owner that is overseas temporarily. So I did get a hold of the message to be here. Ms. Melanie Tools basically just displayed all my concerns as well for the storm, the waterstorm drainage and the lighting for the backyard. My townhome is one of the most affected one by the flooding. My backyard gets completely covered by water when it rains. I think the layers of the street of the Wells Fargo is at the highest point facing my backyard. So that's one of the concern. Definitely the access from the backyard is another concern as well. And yes, probably a knock at the door so that I could have seen it with my camera would have been definitely beneficial, so that I could have gotten in touch with the, I guess, the owner of the property now. Other than that, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have two additional in-person speakers.
Can you, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, Jeff Ward.
Okay, Mr. Ward, you've got three minutes.
Sure.
And then when the yellow light starts to blink, then that's kind of a warning.
Gotcha. Okay, great, thank you. All right, I appreciate it. Yeah, I just found out about this less than 24 hours ago. I live at 4731 Donaldson Road. I'm an owner occupant. Yeah, my main concerns, I've been living there 14 years. Definitely, it's a very tall building. Ironically, I'm a real estate appraiser, been doing that for over 20 years, residential. One concern I have is property values. One concern I have is property values. If I walk outside my door and I see this very large building that's going above the residences, that can definitely have an impact on value. If it bothers me, it would bother somebody that would want to buy my house. So, yeah, that's a concern I have. Yeah, but I, this is the first I've heard about it 24 hours ago. They came by through the neighborhood yesterday with petitions. And so, I just heard about it and I apologize, I'm not totally prepared, but so I showed up today. Yeah, that's my main concern really. It seems like there's, you know, this is a very tall storage facility. Looks like three or four stories, 40 feet. That's something more you would see on North Hampton Boulevard or Virginia Beach Boulevard. It's got a very, this is not really compatible with the surrounding uses, definitely a very, it's a good community. But it's always been commercial back there. We expect it would be commercial or something non-residential, but something that that's that high, it's definitely kind of an eyesore, you know. I don't live directly behind it, but if I did, that would definitely be an even bigger concern. But even just being across the street that's having that view, it's going to be, you know, something that's, can possibly impact the value of the properties. And in regard to Independence Boulevard, that's not really a big impact. It's quite a few feet from it. I've never had a problem with traffic noise or heard about it. So, that's currently not an issue. I kind of like the fact it's always been kind of a small building right there. You got that little bit of space. But yeah, that's my main opposition to it. And I never, maybe he put the notices out. I work from home, but first I've heard about it till yesterday. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ward? Can you point where your residence is?
Yes.
There's a pointer right there on your podium.
Where is it? Oh, this right here. Okay. Let's see. Did I press the red button or?
Can you just see something on the map just to show me?
Yeah, it's actually cut off, but the top right-hand corner, it's the fifth house from the end.
And you?
Yeah, right behind Smokey Road, if you can see that, right in the middle of that road.
So, are you having drainage issues also?
Not for my property. I know we do have some. I do remember when some people had major property damage that backed right up to it. Then I also know when Andrew Jackson Lane, it gets backed up sometimes, get a big puddle. Yeah, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, our final speaker, Eugene Cherkoo.
How you doing, everybody?
Good. Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Eugene Cherkoo and I own the property, the dealership right beside of it.
Okay. And just note that you've got three minutes.
Okay.
And when the yellow light blinks, then that's a warning.
That's fine. Yeah, I was just trying to talk in regards of all the people that leave there because everybody approached me and I wanted to kind of know what's going on in there. So, basically, I just wanted to talk about it, that everybody's opposing, the back people in the back, the owner of the commercials thing, and I'm going to propose for it because of the massive building that's going to be over there. Stormwater is one thing. I don't know how they're going to manage that. I guess they're going to do something on the ground, but I shortly don't believe that the massive building that's actually going to be an acre on a whole property, the whole property is 1.3 acres, and the building is going to be one acre. So, it's telling me that the huge massive building that's actually, I think, is belonging to an industrial somewhere off along, I would say somewhere not in this area. It's got to be constructed somewhere else, not here. And the same thing, I'm thinking that it's just too massive of a building. You know, I talked with the actual guy who's trying to buy it. I didn't see the plans till I get them, probably a couple of days ago. And I seen it that on a map, the way this building is going to be located at is going to be too big. So, also, the traffic it's going to impact over there, we also have a lot of traffic. It's already having a problem with the traffic because it's only a two-lane. And the principal ward actually gets to a three-lane close to Virginia Beach. When it gets close to the base, it's only two lanes go on one side and we already having problems with the traffic coming along with it. Like I said, I'm just concerning about the massive building it's going to be, the walls that's going to face my business that I've been conducting over there for years. And the fact that the building is going to stay right on my property line, that's kind of not acceptable to me. So, basically, I have cars parked right on the side of it and I'm going to have a huge 35-wall, foot wall right on the side of it. That's not acceptable to me, you know. I know they did some changes to the building and I appreciate that fact that they kind of cut a little piece over there or something like that. But the fact that, you know, I was thinking about it, it's just going to be a huge building that not belong there. I can't get to this idea that it's going to, I'm going to have, you know, I have a small little office and a lot of parking, of course, for the, what's the name, for the cars and stuff. But the fact that the building is going to stay that high, it's going to be so massive, I just can't accept it, that's all. Yeah, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Hold on, before you leave, does anybody have any questions for the speaker? I've got a couple. So, how long have you been there at the site?
The business, 30-some years.
30-some years?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
Going to it. It's right over there, you can see a bunch of cars and it's my little building right over there.
The right side, correct?
The right side of the building and plus, you know, that store, that the actual strip mall has been there for longer than that. She actually owned all them properties, the Wells Fargo and my property as well, a long time ago.
She owned both his properties.
Oh, she was, she had, I'm saying for years, 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 40, 50 years ago. And we all bought it from there a while back. Yeah, so basically, like I said, I don't have nothing to, I opposing just because of the size of the building. It's just too big of a building for that small of a property. I think such a building, it's got to be done somewhere over here where you can buy four or five acres and build that kind of building. And plus, yes, the water, you know, I don't know what kind of, I guess nowadays, you know, the engineering, they can do something underneath of it that's going to make it all pretty and nice, that the water's going to get sucked in the front. But the fact is, it's 30-some thousand square foot building, three-store high, all this water's going to collect and it's going to go somewhere. You know, my site sits a little higher, so the water's going to slope down, go into Pleasure House Road. But still, still, I know the people in the back is going to get affected, but I guess, I don't know how they're going to do it so they can suck all this water out of it and bring it to the front, you know. Because of the size of the building, that's all, you know. That's why I'm concerned about the building. If this building would be a little smaller so it can have access and some kind of drainages or more landscaping to be done on the left, but he wants to put this building straight on my property line. I know this is the law. I know this is, you know, B2 district, they allowed you that. I have a little Izeman, I think, on a five-foot Izeman right on the right side of the property. But the fact is, you know, let's say it's a fire over there. So big of a building. How the trucks going to get there? Let's say the fire in the back of the building. Where's the apartments? How they going to get there? It's so narrow spaces and stuff like that. That's what I'm afraid of it. And I don't care about the building, but that's what I'm afraid of, the bigger building and all the still little things, you know.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Ms. Chow, Chris.
So, you've been there 30 years.
Yes, sir.
I just heard you, so your water or stormwater is sheet flowing over the banks right now?
No, 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 no.
You said probably, I mean...
We don't have that much problem. Look, I own, I own a piece of land right beside of it. So, it's just a graveyard and not a graveyard. It's just two, I own two pieces of property right beside of it, so it's just empty land. So, a lot of water gets in there. So, that's why I'm not doing anything. I owned it for a long time.
I know, but you had just mentioned your stormwater or rainwater goes to Pleasure House. How does it get there?
Because the side is higher. Our side is higher. That's what I've seen it, that my side is a little higher, it basically goes down. But of course, it's got drainages on the road, on the main road. I guess the road has been constructed that way that it's got them, things, the water gets underneath of it.
Are you talking in the front or the back?
The front. Oh, the back, also I have a drainage. I have, I have a big drainage that the water gets in there, yeah. Yeah, I have to clean it, that's based on a planning. I have to clean it every time. It's a big grill that the water gets in there, so it's sloped down that way as well.
That's what I wanted to, thank you.
Yep, all right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up for rebuttal?
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Couple of things, first on the height, we designed this building so it does comply with your ordinance. We put the lowest part of the building in the back. We're under the height requirements back there.
Mr. Natter, can you speak a little out?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, beg your pardon. In terms of the height, we designed this building so they would comply and be actually under the height requirement, the ordinance back there in the back. Stormwater sounds like everybody's pretty happy, that was their big issue and I can see why. It's interesting to me that we're the only one of anybody who's opposed to this, who's actually fixing the stormwater problem. And the guy who just spoke is in the exact same boat. In fact, we took off a piece of this building. He may not appreciate it, but my client did. In fact, it was over 10 days ago because we had to submit all the drawings back to the marshal so she could get them in time to get them to you guys in your write-up, which are in the write-up. So, it's more than a few days ago. Let me tell you the reason this last gentleman spoke. My client met with him on several occasions, multiple. His problem, he, which he just mentioned, he told my client, he's got a dumpster in the back, if you look at his property, back in that top corner on the, on the right, left-hand side of his property, he's got a dumpster right there. And he's been using the Wells Fargo access way to get to his dumpster. And he can't get to his dumpster with this plan. We said, "You can relocate your dumpster on your property. We're not going to provide an access way for your dumpster when you own that property and apparently other properties beyond that." So, that's what was turned, that's what we said, "If you've got a visibility problem, we'll take off this 20-foot piece." So, that's what got his eye up. I can't take care of his dumpster, he should. And he shouldn't put it back there next to those residences in the first place. We have no dumpsters, by the way. So, it's just one more thing nice about this application. But I didn't want to address that for you in terms of the height, I've already addressed it. Like I said, we've made accommodations to everybody along there, made sure everybody, you know, knew what we were doing. I can tell you this, we went to all the trouble to reach out to these people and I'm sorry it didn't get to them. The owners naturally wouldn't, because they would have not been there. If it had been their tenants, we would have gotten the residence. But that's what outreach is all about, you got to try. And that's what this applicant did. So, we appreciate it and appreciate your vote. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah. Jeff, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Natter, would you, I heard, I guess it was our last speaker made a comment about the building actually being on the property line. Can you address that, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to because as you can see, it is not. Even though, I will tell you, there's a zero setback between B2 properties, zero. So, we've complied with the setback there. And the other thing we told the residents in the back, we're not only putting in the 15-foot strip in the back, but as you can see, the only thing that touches the 15 feet are these certain points of the building. The bulk of that area back there, which is well over 20 feet, by the way, and the nice part about it is there's no cars back there, whereas if the existing situation, yeah, it could be a road back there with cars, nighttime, all that stuff, and people doing some things you wouldn't want to know about back there. All that disappears with this application.
And just one more, I know the one gentleman who doesn't live directly behind but lives around the curve, mentioned that he was concerned about his property values and the side of the building. Can you address the landscaping, please?
Landscaping, I'm happy to because we exceeded the landscaping requirements by the city. And another thing I'll point out is, when we met with the people on Oriwell Drive, they had some very expensive condominiums directly behind the site. Not only did they not reduce their property values, they increased their property values. It did cut out the noise. And many of you may know some of the residents of that complex. It's a very nice complex, but it cut out the noise from those people, it maintained their property values and their property values have not decreased one iota, not one. And in fact, if anything, if this guy turns into a restaurant, which could easily do, could open till 2:00 AM, B2, nobody has to stand here for a restaurant. Nobody has to stand here for a restaurant. And then everybody goes crazy. So, anyway, thank you for your time and appreciate your willingness to listen to everything.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm sorry, you know, it's closed at this point.
He's just making comments about...
Ma'am, ma'am. Yeah, ma'am, I'm sorry. That's fine.
Cut it, cut it.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, you know, we're closed for comment. Robin, do you have something?
Yes, so this is a staff question. I'm on the code site looking at the things that qualify under B2. One of them is a grocery store. So, for my reference, what is the maximum height of an Aldi or a Lidl that could go in, that would go in? Like, is that 40, is that the same 40-feet limit?
The same provision will apply that within 100 feet from the property used for residential, it needs to be under 35 feet.
Under 35 feet?
Yep, within 100 feet of the residential zone property.
Okay, so, and maybe somebody else can clarify, I missed it. Isn't part, so in theory, an Aldi could go into this space, but you're shaking your head no.
It's way too small. It's 1.3 acres. You can't get an Aldi on 1.3 acres, you need two and a half acres.
Okay, so if it was two and a half acres, it could be...
With its and butts for candies and nuts, but...
Which is, but I'm just saying, like, it's a same, similar-sized building that could go in this property with the same elevation.
By right.
By right.
A mom-and-pop grocery store, yes.
Excuse me?
A mom-and-pop kind of grocery store, yes.
Right. Or bar and grill.
Yep.
Right. That could have reached the same elevations, have the same sizes.
Just, but just remember now, there are parking requirements that go with more intense retail uses.
Right.
That scrambles that whole calculus. So, this has a much smaller park than something like a grocery store would have. And that, everything that they just said in terms of all this stuff, the setbacks and all the rest of it, it's just a whole different animal.
I think she's getting at the size of the building is what she's talking about. And I think that was one that, she's talking about the size of the building.
Okay, thank you.
But you're talking about one of these other ones would require parking, so the building would probably have to be smaller, have to be a smaller, a smaller building.
I don't want to get wrapped around the axle on it. You can't get a 30, you can't get a, it's a different animal.
Okay, so, so at this point, let's, you know, we've already had discussion, but let's, let's have a formal, formal discussion at this point. So, who would like to lead off? Robin's question was really directed for staff, so...
Well, I'll start. I've done business with this, this company for, yeah, for many, many years. We've got three large storage units to the one that's fairly close to our neighborhood. And it's a large building, I'll give it that. And it abuts a restaurant on Laskin Road and then three-story, very new, fairly new, gated community with a lot of people that we know live right beside it. They're quiet. I've been in there all kinds of days, times. They don't have a dumpster, which is extremely frustrating, so you have to haul all your junk away. And you're not allowed to use the restaurant's dumpster. So, but they are, they're, they're, they're well-kept, they usually have no more than two employees, they're extremely quiet, they are underlit for something like this. They're always landscaped. I have to say, it's one of the prettiest, nicest capped-up storage units that I've, and that's why we use them. And eventually, I'll clean out and I won't have to, but, but right now, they do, they do conduct their business very well. I have to speak with them.
Okay, Mr., sorry, Mr. Weiner, go ahead.
Couple of things real quick. I'm sitting here trying to think of all the ones we've approved here in the last year or two or three, or what, I mean, for a while now, because we go down to Sea-Tac and they've always been next to our neighborhood. I mean, as high as they are, we just approved one last month, right smack dab in the middle of Kempsville, of Lord Dunmore. I'm sorry?
It was a lot larger.
A lot larger. A lot larger? I don't believe it's going to, it's not gonna take any value away from any homes, it's not gonna take any value away from homes, I don't think, it's just a quiet use, it's just a very quiet use, so I'm, I'm gonna support it.
Okay, Mr. Redmond?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple things as well, first off, the, the challenge is, it's just, it just amazes me sometimes, the challenges that a number of people cite about this, the flooding in your yard has nothing to do with this application, it has to do with the state of this property and the two, and the two properties adjacent to it. There's impervious surface, which is to say asphalt all around you, and that's what this site is, but for a little bit of, of pervious, kind of towards the rear of the property. That's your flooding problem. It's not this, it doesn't exist today. Heard enough about flooding in somebody's yard, well, the building hadn't been built, so it can't be them. What you have here is the opportunity to improve, if not entirely fix, that drainage problem. So don't look down your nose at the fix. I mean, I'd be welcoming that if my big concern was flooding from this property. If you were concerned about property values, I would be far more concerned about the rundown shopping center next door, which could have used some investment decades ago, and the used car lot next door. Neither of the two of those is exactly jacking up your property values. This building, I think they, they really did take, make an effort to make an attractive building, as, as the, as Mr. Nutter, the attorney, said, looks more like an office building, which is one of the things I hit him with when we talked some months ago, is it's gotta look good. And the other was, it's, it's a vast improvement to me in terms of the landscaping all around it, particularly on Independence Boulevard, and to the rear of the property for the residents that live back there, it is a vast improvement. It's just a vast improvement, it is undeniable, it's inarguable, that will be a softer, more attractive improvement to that part of Independence Boulevard. So, you know, I, I hate to, you know, hate to be that tough about it, but it just doesn't make any sense to me to argue that flooding and property values are gonna be an issue, there're gonna be improvements on both fronts. And I agree certainly with Dee, she has personal experience with this kind of stuff, because she's got a lot of stuff, it sounds like, it wouldn't work.
Yeah, I have too much stuff.
What are you throwing, we, you know, they take the black can out every week, you can put some stuff in there? But it, in any event, I think it's a fine application, I think if it's built, I think it'll be completely benign, and so I'm certainly gonna be in support of it and prepare to make a motion when everybody gives me a wink and an eye.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Bradley?
I don't quite have the same feelings as the previous commissioners, could, but I might be able to get there, could you put the picture up, the conceptual one, where the storage facility is behind the townhomes? Is that available? Not that one.
I don't know if that's on.
Isn't that not on there?
It's on ours.
Okay, I, I apologize.
No, there it is.
Yeah, the one, the one on the bottom right, and, and I went out there, when I visited that on our site visit Thursday, my, my thought when I saw it is, wow, this is gonna be tight. When we got the package, I didn't hear any concerns from citizens, so I said, "Well, maybe they're okay with it," and then I saw the supplement last night. So, before this, this discussion, I probably was voting against it, my concern being the height, and the, you know, property values and all that aside, if I lived in those homes and I saw that height behind me, I'd be concerned. I mean, you know, that's the western side, you're not gonna be feeling the sunset anymore. But three of the five speakers, and I'm trying to weigh what, what I heard today, three of the five speakers felt like the stormwater would improve, that the lighting would be minimized, the applicant has gotten rid of one of the access points, and I'm gonna rely on our traffic engineer that that is a good thing to do. So with all that aside, I think I, I'll, I'll support it, it's a, it's a close call for me, but those were my concerns going into this discussion. And, and we have seen some of these in the past, and I agree, this one just seemed tighter and closer to me than the other ones, so.
Mr. Alcriss?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, that the stormwater, and I guess I gotta ask a question to Planning Department, DSC, so it sounds like there's been a problem with stormwater on the townhouses, most likely with townhouses, there's some sort of system on the entire length of that townhouse, because it's gotta go somewhere, and most likely the builder or developer had it, you know, moved into, to the rear, and then the site on Independence had it move into the rear, so what I'm getting at, there must be some sort of drainage system or facility that's taken that rear water, so when it comes up, that's part of the view, right? If it's affecting what's there, they're gonna have to adjust and make it accordingly to, to fit, if it's not working, it's gonna come up?
That's correct, it'll, they'll have to address their stormwater, they won't, if there are problems, if there are problems that are coming from the townhouse side, based on how it's graded, that, of course, they will not solve that, but they will solve, they will address their stormwater problems on their side.
Thank you, that's all I had, because I'm, I'm supporting it also.
Okay, well, hold on, Ms. Costin?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm supporting it too, and improvement is an improvement, and if, and if you can improve the stormwater at this time, you can do the best with it that you can. I actually would have supported your second entrance, but since you withdrew it, I can't do that now, but, because I understand that, that people who drive, everybody thinks they can drive, everybody thinks they can paint, and half of the people can't drive and half of them can't paint, so. I know that when you pull in and there's no space to back up a used truck, which you're not used to driving, it's kind of the potential for accidents, so I'm supporting it as it is.
Hold on, so, you know, I think it's a good look for Independence, it's, it's tall on Independence Boulevard, you know, maybe a little bit out of the ordinary for that, that location, but I think it's fine, you know, for, for driving along Independence Boulevard. I think that the adjacent neighbor, new business, you brought up some good points about the massing, you know, just the scope and the scale of the, of the project, in terms of, you know, adjacent property and, but I don't, I don't think that should necessarily negatively impact his, his property. I think that stormwater, you know, has been, you know, we've talked about that, you know, to a great extent, and, you know, it's expected that, you know, that will be addressed during design, and then during design review. The adjacent neighbors, I, I think that, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, that, 15 feet off the property line, and then another 15 feet from the back of their, their homes, 20 feet maybe to the property line, so it's only, only generally, gosh, you know, 30 feet, you know, maybe 35, 40 feet near the back of their homes. And I don't know if some of the examples that we've provided, if that's quite the same distance, you know, all along there, and I, I think the property owners do have a good point in terms of, you know, just the nearness and the scope and the scale, and the size of the building, you know, in relation to, to their homes. I think it does affect the suburban area, I think it, you know, the comprehensive plan is against that, and, and so I'm not for, for it, so I'm, I'm not gonna support it. Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who was the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alcriss, the second. So we have a, a motion by Mr. Redmond, and a second by Ms. Alcriss.
Okay, thank you, the vote is open. A reported vote of nine in favor and two against, agenda item number three has been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next meeting. I stand for the meeting.